Later, not only was out to lunch on the other issue, but I'm looking at this and I'm thinking. Déjà vu. And I'm having trouble with that. And I'm not sure how to. How to go ahead and not be déjà vu. I mean, this looks. I tried five or six years ago to get. Requirements from people and I got some of them, but they were all over the map. People that had, you know, 5,000 square feet, all of a sudden needed 20,000 square feet and that kind of stuff. And I don't know that these folks will have any. Way to bring that down to reality. In other words, hiring a consultant to do what we can't do. Because we don't seem to be inclined to. Be rational and honest within ourselves. I don't know how they can force that.
Maybe an additional clause might be under. Objective B, when we talk about identifying space needs, projected future requirements. Might, you might add. One or two additional Superior Court Rooms. What, whatever that would expand, the potential needs. Giving us options for, you know, for growth, because, you know, the county's gonna continue to grow, albeit slowly.
That's, that's what makes us so darn complicated. Within the Hall of Justice, we don't really have. My assumption is we don't really have a lot of growth capability. If we were to go to someplace else.
So remember, the original Hall of Justice had three courtrooms. And now they have five Superior Court Rooms. So, I mean, there's that example. Of course, this is from 1975 until today. So it's. You know, so they had a bill, a capacity for growth. We, we maxed that out, other than the fact the jail's empty.
Well, but then, yeah. I don't disagree with you. I have combed the hallways there. I don't, since the COVID event, I haven't done that a whole bunch, but. I walked through there and I tell you, those courtrooms are empty more times than they're occupied. And I feel like this is the same old story in the government these. We've got a problem. Well, let's throw money at it. Let's throw another courtroom. Let's throw another. Another judge. And I'm looking at the, let, forget that last statement, just another, another courtroom. And it's like. Come on, guys. And so I, I don't know how they can tell that.
I understand.
And for courtrooms in, in specific. I. Talked to the presiding judge and said, look, there are courtrooms across the country. Go find one that you like. Get the blueprint, should be in public domain, and we'll see what we can do. So then if we hand it to Ada. How do you pronounce her?
I'm fine with that. I, I'm not, I say Aida, Ada. I'm good.
And then, and then they have something to chew on. And I also wanted the modularization. What is a courtroom? It's this space and this space, including a bathroom and maybe a lunchroom or something. Anything to define it. I can't get boo from those people.
I, I will say, well, first of all, I don't disagree that you, you have. A lot of valid points. I will say, I feel like there has been, I don't feel I know there has been progress on that front on what your requests were. We have received a lot of good information. I'm guessing people were listening to you when you made that request. But I think it came to us and maybe, maybe you should have received that. You know, we were asking for it. We did receive comparable. Courtroom designs from comparable sized counties, Thurston County being one of them. We did the site visit at Lewis County. So this isn't to say that sky's the limit on needs. It is definitely a component of this scope, but it, it will be looked upon again, not as what do, what do you need? We're gonna give it to you. We're going to be looking at comparable courtrooms in Washington State for our population and our needs. And it's not going to just be, not a free for all, that might not be the right word, but. So I hear you and we do have a lot of information that we're working on. So I just want to tell you that too, in regard to your requests from them.
Okay, and a piece of. If we choose option A, option A, meaning we're gonna stay in place and refurbish the Hall of Justice. That's got a lot of cost because the courts have to continue. And I don't know if you remember when COVID struck, we used the event center. We were paying 40,000 a month for a virtually unused facility. I should say.
That's really when it jumped out at us. Whoa, it's empty all the time.
Yeah.
I wondered to what extent there is a. A. How do, how do I say it carefully? Every judge wants their own courtroom. It's their silo.
Right.
And, and so that's the idea of. But having said that, I know we continue to get each week the schedule of everything that's going on over there.
We used to. I, you still get it?
I still do, but do I study it? But it's an indication that they're, they're very busy in utilizing space. Cause I don't, you know, I think they go back and forth between courtrooms.
Any sense that the Superior Court says that. Their schedules are sacrosanct in some way. It doesn't seem to hold up because I've looked at some of those. I'm like, I'm gonna watch this. Oh. Not available. Okay, let me watch this other one. Oh, not available. Oh, you know, so. They have a lot more flexibility than they own up to, but any, that, that's a side issue.
And, and I. And of course, I, I understand a, a lot of the schedule gets changed because cases get settled out of court. And you can, but you gotta plan for reserving a courtroom in case it doesn't settle and then it settles and it's opened up again. And. I, I don't know, I don't know. If. I'm, I'm assuming it serves justice to settle things out of court. You know, rather than going through trials. But. You know, again, there's pressure brought to bear to get cases settled and. For a lot of different reasons, so.
And I don't want to, I don't want to portray that I have such an in-depth understanding about how the courts work by any means. I do know that we'll be learning a lot moving forward with, in conjunction with the Milig HVAC project. And then obviously if we move forward with this project. And at least giving the board information to make, hopefully make an informed decision and whatever that may be. That really is the intent and to try to gather as much information that we can provide you based off these types of conversations and questions. And give you guys the information that you're looking for. You know. Whatever good, bad that means, you know, depending on what. If you're in the hall or not in the hall, you know, what direction that is, that's, that's what the intent is. So. The more information and background from the board that we have will only, you know, have a better product, in my opinion, or at least a better. Set of options, so hopefully.
Yeah, I, I think along the way, say that we embark upon this, the. They'll have a lot of thinking to do about zig or zag. I would think you'd wanna meet with the. Board at least every month to, you know.
A pulse, just to have a.
Yeah, so it's, there's so much that. There'll be pressure on them from different people about this, and I think it'll come to us. We won't be here, but it'll come to us to. Kind of say, no, that isn't really valid pressure. And then there, there's some pretty heavy thoughts too. You mentioned the leasing. There are some big thoughts there and there's the financing of it is something that. We probably want. Well, certainly we need. The PA's office and on that to know what we can and can't do in terms of stuff and Deborah also and I. Maybe once a month is. About the right. Time to make.
We might actually discover in the next year or so that. The lawyers don't have to actually be in proximity of the courtroom. Because we're gonna have a law firm right across the plaza from us.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's gonna be a lot of traipsing back and forth, but. You know. It's. Customary. Since we've had this Hall of Justice, that the PA is right next door, but. Now the county clerk, clerk staff, now that's different. That's gotta be pretty close to the, that's gotta be part of the courtroom. Do lawyers, even prosecuting attorneys? I don't think so. Don't even have to have the sheriff there really, other than providing security for the court, but sheriff's office could be anywhere. With the council, I think.
Yes.
What makes these people the right people?
Etta?
Yeah.
Well, the easy probably, you know, the easy go-to answer, and I won't sugarcoat it, is that we have a current contract and agreement with them. Furthermore, they work with a lot of local entities that we're familiar with and we. That's why probably, I won't say that. It was, we were eager to work with them because of their locality and the effect that they had on the local area and schools, but they've also worked in other courts. And so speaking on that, when we met with them on the first two walkthroughs, they did have a lot of experience in feasibility. So I was excited to partner with them for that reason as well.
So they wouldn't necessarily be the final architect. This is just preliminary.
No, this is all preliminary, correct.
I, I was gonna mention that the architect of the Hall of Justice had never built a courtroom before.
Interesting.
Hasn't since.
Probably for a good reason. No, that is not to say that they will be the architects. This, if, you know, whatever direction we move forward in. I believe we would need to go out to formal bid for an architect firm. And whether they, they got it or not would be dependent upon the bid process.
How, how do they work with, with the Milig people?
Great question. We haven't had formal introductions or meetings yet, but in this document, they do reference our, our Milig. Energy contract. So that is something that will be moving forward if, again, assuming the board would like to move forward with this proposal. We would do next steps with them.
So from a hierarchical standpoint, I should view this as kind of the. High level requirements document.
Yes.
And then. Milig would be the. Doing the design review itself.
Yes, specific to our project with them, which is, you know, HVAC electrical.
Milig will only do HVAC and electrical?
That's all we've, we're agreeing to so far, yes.
But they're capable across the board, aren't they?
I believe they are capable across the board for what we may have future needs for.
How much are we talking about?
On the proposal?
Yeah.
I have not received, because I have not responded that I'm okay with this yet. I've not received a price quote on this. But I can speak to the proposal for the recent juvenile scope. And so I have a general idea and I believe that one was about 24 to 29,000. That's just off the top of my head. I'm not 100%. But that's about the range we'd expect something like this to be, I would imagine.
Even though this is much bigger.
It is much bigger, but that proposal included, I think, a, a potential design component. I'm not super familiar with the juvenile one. It, it could be more than that. I don't know. Yeah. This is very early stages and I understand I just kinda handed this to you. Again, no decisions have to be made. I really want you guys to be able to understand what. You know, before I just come to a meeting and, and ask you to make a decision. So. What I can do is respond back with some of the things we've talked about today and get maybe a better idea of. Price, so I can quote probably better numbers for you guys.
Well, we'll need that for the funders anyway.
Oh, right, absolutely. Just at this stage, I didn't, I didn't bring that with me. I really wanted to make sure the board was comfortable before we went further in any way.
You remember how much we paid for the Mangan Mang report?
The number that jumps into my head is 200.
Wow.
But.
And that was back then.
Yeah. That was, that was all the facilities.
Yeah, and that is not going, this, again, back to what you said, was, is very high level, hoping to guide some decision making. But it will not be to the extent of the main report. And they, actually, I sent that to them so that they have that and all the groundwork on that front. A lot of it's been, had been laid as far as the Hall of Justice goes.
So if you. Look at three services provided. And I just item. II. Engage specialist consultants. I'm having trouble reconciling that with.
Let me get to the right page.
It's on page two.
Got it.
When you start looking at structural engineer, I'm wondering. Why is a structural engineer there?
Mainly because of the future, the potential expansion of the building. So Commissioner Weber referenced that we have done an addition. There's actually the potential to do another addition under the overhang. And that would require just a structural analysis, I think, in order to give you guys one of these deliverables, which is, should we stay there and expand? So that would be my understanding of why they would be on that list.
I guess the devil is in the detail. It's hard to know. We, we know from the plans that we have, you can look at it and you know the land around and okay, we could. Expand out to here. It doesn't require any real structural engineering. To suggest that we could solve a problem by expanding. Now, actually building the expansion, that's when you need your structural engineer.
And I would just add that because of the conditions of some things that we've discovered recently. Like when we were trying to repair and replace the entrance and where it was. We had to get ramjack in and repaired due to the ground conditions and the structural integrity. That could be a reason. You'll also note that there is a geotechnical component, which is not included in this. If we decided to go that route, that would just be us. That it's not included in here for those reasons, because that's another unknown. It was built, as you've mentioned before, on a sawdust plant along the river. And so we've been learning some of the ramifications of that over time.
But it's resting on bedrock. It's not, it's not floating.
No, we're not sinking. No, no, we're not sinking.
It's just that that's, the sewer lines were resting on it. That caused that.
It's a potential concern. And I, you know, in kind of going back to Commissioner Mortensen's. Comment that this is a lot of information and a lot of detail. I understand coming and just handing this over. It's not that it's a risk, but I understand that there's, it's a lot of information, though I anticipate a lot of questions and comments. And so that's why I just wanted to give you guys a week or two to.
I'm not criticizing this as much. I'm looking at it from. Aida now and somebody's gonna hand me this and I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm not sure what it is I'm gonna do, but it's gonna cost.
So Savannah, you suggested, I think, monthly check-in or, or, or did you say that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna come back on a month. No later than four months from today.
Beginning, no later.
I will probably come back to the board on this in a couple of weeks, but noted on that.
Excellent answer. So I will look at this more closely and you say I've got an electronic copy?
I will be sending this afternoon once I return back to the office after this meeting. I hope to highlight some. High level bullets that just wanna make sure you guys see. And again, Commissioner Doll's out, so I want him to have a chance to review as well. That, that was it on this one topic of our two topics. The next topic we had was to workshop ARPA. We're not making a formal request for funds today, but we did wanna talk to the board about primarily some of our water sewer projects. That we anticipate increasing costs or have had increased costs. So I'll probably pass this over to Susan.
So good afternoon, Susan Eugenius, excuse me, county engineer. So I did kind of wanna start this conversation with you and we are trying to work with the auditor. On the remaining direct obligation funds. So when we came to you. Four years ago, we had a budgeted amount of 8.9 million dollars. For our six projects that were funded. Our current estimate, I have gotten the recent updates on all of the project, is 14.3 million. So we are now looking at a local project match of just under 5 million dollars.
Which project is on the bottom of the list?
Yes. Is that enough in that pile? So what do you, I, I guess, what is your, which pile, which project is on the bottom of the list? You mean, which one do I like the least?
If you only have X amount of dollars.
Yeah, and that, that is where, where I, why I wanted to start this conversation because our current. Water sewer capital fund has. 4.6 million dollars, so we will not be able to complete these projects with the current estimate. And our current dollars amount. So I just kind of wanted to get the juices flowing for. Working on potentially getting at least a half million dollars, additional dollars. Which will cover, more than cover what we anticipate and then anticipate it changes. The other option is looking at getting us back to our 25% match, which was what we originally were working with. So that is the numbers I'm working with. We're gonna be working with the auditors on what the exact amount that they have left on the direct. Distribution or direct obligation or whatever the, the correct term is for these projects. So. One of the biggest cost increases is. Shadow Mountain, that project, based on the scope of it, has gone up quite significantly. In addition to the ARPA money, we have congressionally directed money on that all, project also. So we're working on that and when we, we, all of these are 90% design estimates. We are, everything's in with Department of Health. We have received the approval for. I believe the Ryder Wood just came in with a few minor comments left for us to address, the same with Toodle. Water pump stations. So Toodle Water Pump Stations, we're working with WashDOT to get our permitting. So we're really close on all of these projects, so we're anticipating that these are. Good, real-time estimates. And depending on our bid timing, we may get better prices than this.
I'm trying not to be angry or offended. To go from 2 million to 5 million is egregious. To go from. Where does it? 750 to 1.15. I mean, we've got, well, to go from 1.2 million to 2.5 also. Were we drinking too much vodka that night?
Which night? The night that I got the estimates or the nights that we made the initial estimates?
Initial estimates.
I am. Potentially, yes. I, the initial estimates were out of an old report and I do not believe they were inflated enough. Excuse me, not inflated enough. Brought up to current prices. So when we brought them, I had really rough numbers that were given to me and I went with them. So.
There. So my colleague asked for sort of priorities. I don't recall how you answered that.
I, I answered, which one do you think is my least favorite or which one do you think I think is the most least important for the community and can wait? So I, I will tell you the ones I, the Ryder Wood Emergency Water Supply. That to me is probably one of the most important on the list. Just because of the issues that we're having out there and we anticipate them not getting any better.
How many homes are out there?
That is about half of our water system.
Anywhere from 400 to 500, because our water system's 1,300, so.
So that one to me is probably one of our most important and we have congressionally. Money going towards that one that is helping make up the shortfall on that particular project. Because as you can see, the local dollars on that one is still at 600,000 versus a lot of the other projects where it's higher. So to me, that would be the highest priority that we need to get done for our community. The Camelot Loss System unfortunately is also at close to a failure point. So that would be another one that should be done. I'm trying to think of.
How many users on that one?
Forty? Somewhere around that neighborhood, maybe a few less than that. So. We have that one where we are kind of ecology, wants us to get that project done. So the.
Explain that, ecology wants you to get that done?
Uh, yes, because the existing system is at end of life and starting to fail. Which is why that one is another one that's higher importance. The Toodle Water Pump Stations, that impacts. Some of our current users where they have low pressure. So it will increase the pressure up to the required amount of the meter that we're required to provide. We have two. This is two different locations that we will be correcting that low pressure issue and it also gives us. Capability to expand in those two locations. So it impacts current users and gives us the potential for future users.
How many users currently? Are we talking about the first one on the list?
Yes, the first one on the list, I don't know that number. I apologize. I will definitely have.
The, the Toodle Water System serves the community of Toodle, but also East Silver Lake.
Yes.
Right, that's where the density, that's where the population is.
Yes.
So we're probably looking at 1,200? Not, not that high?
That's for the, that's for number five, right?
So number, number five is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. These pump station upgrades directly impact a certain percentage of those users. And I do not know that number off the top of my.
It's a low numbers, I remember.
Yes, it's a lower number. It would be on the scale of 30 or 40 would be my guess.
Or even fewer.
Yes, potentially. So there is that one and that is also an issue that Health Department wants us to address.
Susan, real quick, you mentioned that, that the pumps would enable, I'm guessing you were looking to further development if we were to upgrade those?
Yes, because we'd be able to serve areas that we currently can't serve that are near the existing system. But we would be able to expand further along. Down South Silver Lake is where the one where Juanita is. And then the other one is Tower Road. Right behind the gas station. Right off of the highway. So those are the two areas where we have low pressure zones, because there's some hillsides.
What was the name of the road?
So there's Tower Road right off of the highway. So there's a. So that one has a. Existing reservoir that the way it serves, some of the people have low pressure. So we're correcting that issue at that location. Then the other location is down off on Juanita. Which is off of South Silver Lake Road.
South Silver Lake.
Yes. So.
And the Shadow Mountain?
So Shadow Mountain is an expansion to new users, so it does not impact any of our current users. It will be adding area to the system.
So there'll be a pipeline that goes up, what, George Martin to get it to Shadow?
So it's. So there's the existing pump station beside, behind the high school. So there will be a fill line coming from that. Reservoir running overland up to the top of Shadow Mountain, where we will build a new reservoir. That will then serve downward down the hill.
And if the board recalls, this is the area that there were significant water quality issues. Serving those people on the hill. I think they had come to the board a few years ago, several times.
There was an arsenic issue.
That's correct. That's correct.
So that leaves us with the.
How how many arsenic issues? How many people? I mean, we have to be a bit brutal here because this is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
And expansion for new users when we have obligations to old users. Seems like it dictates a priority.
So that there would be, I don't know how many lots potential there are. That I know there's at least three existing that have the arsenic issues, and beyond that number, I don't know. But that is information I definitely can be working on to get these answers. And then the Tootle Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade. In some ways, that would be easier to cut items from, which, as you can see, that one, our original budget was 2.6, and we're at 2.7. So that one is the one that's running closest, and that is because we cut at least one of the upgraded items that was running, charged, increasing the budget massively. So we were looking at ways to keep that one close to budget. So this is the first step to bring this to your attention, and we will certainly work on getting more of those answers, and if we can find any cost savings in the projects before we go out to bid.
Yeah, I don't think it escapes me or my colleague. This is all in District 3.
So if we end up in the local match of 5 to 8 million dollars, which sounds like we might be headed that way. At what point do we bite the bullet and borrow the money based on revenue bonds?
The other option for us, particularly since it's water sewer projects, is we can always go after the drinking water revolving fund loans, which are extremely low interest and then would obligate directly to the water sewer fund. And that would be where we were looking at. If we cannot get these down to our cost estimate, maybe we finish the design on one of these projects and sit it for the next round and finish the projects that we can afford.
We we also have a deadline on when the ARPA money has to be used, which is two years.
And we have to obligate, sorry.
We have to obligate by December 31st, of course.
Right.
But that's, we don't have a whole lot left to reallocate. As you mentioned, you're going to look at that. Okay, so the revolving fund is is a resource available that?
Yes, revolving fund and Public Works Trust Fund. For these type of projects, you have to go to the revolving fund first, and then if you don't get those, you can go to the Public Works Trust Fund. But they are all, both sources out there, and they have low interest rates, and they go even lower if it's a distressed community.
Yeah, before I get terribly interested in that, I need to see the forecast of the next 10 to 20 years. We're going to put in so many millions of dollars, we'll borrow the money upfront. I want to see how the users are going to pay for that over the next 20 years. I'll bet you it doesn't pencil out at this point. Also, I want to, I am reminded that what discussion would we be having if we hadn't gotten that ARPA windfall?
So if we hadn't have gotten.
Very weird to me.
Yeah, if we hadn't have gotten that ARPA windfall, we would have worked on the drought funding availability for Ryderwood. So we would have gotten, gone with the direct, congressionally deli, directed money, which is a million. And there was also a lot of drought funds, water drought funds, climate resiliency money that that project would have been available for. So we would have gone after that for that. Shadow Mountain.
You wouldn't have touched.
Unfortunately, no. Camelot Loss, because it's a failing system, we would have gone the drinking water revolving fund, and eventually we would have done the two different systems and the Tootle Water Pump Station that way. And the wastewater treatment plant upgrades probably would have been done, Hilter Skil, piecemeal.
To me, that sort of answers the question.
One of the things I do want to look at is, one of the things you alluded to was how are the users going to pay for this? I I really believe we need to do a good rate study for our water sewer sewer systems because one has not been done for a while. I am looking at our system development charges because ours are quite a bit lower than everybody else, I mean, significantly lower. So I want to look at at least upgrading those before we do a rate study. That's something that Sean and I have been talking about, working on, potentially bringing it this fall for the, just the system development charge, and then next year trying to do a rate study so that we have good knowing what we're going forth. Because besides these projects, we have the Woodbrook project going on because that's an ecology. Also, that system is starting to, the treatment plant is past its end of life, and we're working on that study of replacement. But we're also going to have to do an INI project prior to being able to replace the treatment plant. INI is influence infiltration for people who don't work in the field every day. We're working on that study and design right now. Then we have the treatment plant. So those those two projects alone are going to be another 2 to 3 million dollars easily. And then other projects that Patrick said were on the list before he left were the Tootle Sewer System INI improvements and the Ryderwood Distribution Main Realignment, and eventually maybe potentially a Camelot Fire Flow Upgrade because they currently do not have fire protection in the Camelot neighborhood. The Tootle System INI Improvements, that is something that, instead of doing it all in one fell swoop, we could plan it out, break it out into areas and do much smaller projects. Instead of trying to do a big 2 or 3 million dollar project, you do a $400,000 project with that year's capital funding, and then do another one and just work your way slowly through the system.
So if if you identify neighborhoods that are low income, you may qualify for Community Development Block Grants as well. I know the City Lobby did that in the Highlands area 40 years ago.
Kelso did it in, North Kelso in the early 2000s. They did a lot of sewer replacements up in the North Kelso area. So, and I know the county did, I believe Ryderwood qualified when they did an INI project up there in the early 2000s.
Camelot would probably.
Camelot would.
Yeah. So another question that I had, I don't, you may not, you may not know, but the biggest development in North County in the last couple of years is the Space Age Gas Station and Development. Are they on well water or are they supplied by Castle Rock? It's a little ways away from Castle Rock.
I'm not 100% sure, to be honest.
Tootle Park could, might also be economically just depressed too. It's kind of spotty, I mean.
Yeah.
Depends on, when you do the survey and how many people are camped out at Tootle Park RV. But.
It's based off census, yes. And they they look at a couple of different ways to do it. If you apply for a CDBG grant, you can do it based on census tract, or you can go out and do a economic survey. And then where you, so like, if we were looking at Camelot, you would have to do a economic survey because everybody else in that tract is not in distress like they are. So you would have to do a specific survey for that neighborhood. But yes, you can do it either way. You just have to have your methods approved when you do the surveys.
I only ask because we, in trying to secure parks funding, for Riverside Parks, we found that it was very difficult to use a census. And there's actually very few small pockets that qualify there in unincorporated areas, which I've, I had no idea. So that's why I asked.
One of the other data points that they look at, especially so it doesn't help in our unincorporated areas most, but if, let's say Rose Valley Elementary School, 50 or 75% of the school population qualified for free reduced lunch, that you can contribute to your distressed also.
Yep.
So you mentioned Woodbrook as having future sewer line problems.
Yes.
I know that, if I remember correctly, Beacon Hill supplies the water?
They do.
Begrudgingly, I understand. And I know they've been pretty adamant that they're not interested in helping out with the sewer treatment, but Beacon Hill doesn't do sewer treatment anyway.
Correct.
They just put it in a pipeline down to the central, the regional treatment plant. It's not that far to send a line across to to West Side Highway for most random.
And that is one of the alternatives we're looking at. So we're, we started off just doing an alternative study, and the ecology came back and said, well, no, first you have to address your INI issue. So that's what we're doing first, and then we're going to get back to the alternatives analysis where we will look at replacing our plant, doing a pump station and connecting it into Beacon Hill, and then a couple of different plant options. Or figuring out, yes, so that is one of the options we're looking at.
So when you determine rates, all of these various systems that we supply water to have their own rates? It's all combined?
It's all combined, yes.
And same thing with the sewer customers, it's all, so Camelot and the Tootle Sewer Customers play, pay the same rate?
Yes.
So you you try to spread the costs out over as many people as possible?
Yes.
Okay. Even though Camelot is on septics?
Yes.
Giant septic, large lot septic, whatever.
Large onsite septic systems, yes.
That's why it's called loss.
That's why it's called loss. Now, we just lose, lose the sewage, you know, we collect it and make it disappear.
And that's too far away to send down to the treatment plant?
It is a little far away to send south. There was, I know at one point, a discussion of kind of forcing it over the river to Castle Rock, but that didn't pencil out.
Tough to go uphill.
That's what pumps are for.
We did add, but we did add some pumps in South Castle Rock.
I don't want to clean those pumps.
I was thinking, a poop pump? Is that what they are for sewage? They're called a sewer pump, they're called a sewer pump, yeah. And you have to be careful, you have to grind up. So when I worked at Kelso, they kept having problems with one of their pump stations because people at the jail kept flushing cheats. So they're, they would get all caught up in their pumps. So they had to work with, that that was back when the jail was in the Hall of Justice, and directly discharged to the Kelso system.
That was after they fixed it, because when it plugged up, it it rained on the judges.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right. That was a long time ago, though.
It was, early 2000s.
Wait a minute, that's not that long ago.
My woodworking shop, I have the vacuums, and occasionally I suck up a rag. Doesn't work very well.
No, and that that becomes an issue in your sewer pump stations. That's why there's usually a grinder involved. Okay, so I'll work on getting more information on all of these so that when we come back and work with the auditors to find out what money we have, and then we can have a
Yeah.
Discussion, yeah.
You got to admire Mike Moss. The hard conversation was now, not earlier today.
We praised the way he was running the office.
I think that is all we have, unless the board has any other items for us, and I think you have risk weighting.
You good?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love saying this, we're now at risk.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Shelley Pierce, Risk Manager. So yesterday, we notified the Board of our intentions to hire outside counsel for the current and pending workers' compensation claims. This step is necessary due to the technical complexities involved, which requires specialized legal expertise beyond our current resources. So the document is authorized for special counsel documents and was prepared and ready for all requested signatures.
Pretty straightforward stuff. The only question I have is, do you need a signature today? If you do, you're.
By tomorrow. I know Commissioner Doll is out of the office, so I think as soon as possible, but whenever we can get the signatures obtained. We've already obtained legal counsel, so they're just waiting on this document as a legal formality.
The most important page is page number six.
Yep.
And the second most important page is page three, clause three, termination.
Oh, good point. No, I'm, we've done this before with Doug, and hardly it for me to even pretend I'll find something.
And as I understand, our legal in-house representation is very familiar with who's representing us and is very impressed and excited to partner with them.
So the Vice Chair can't sign when the chair is gone?
Uh, yes, actually, you just have to cross. I checked this with Doug yesterday, you you just have to cross the name out.
Oh, okay.
Right arm, so I.
So then, yes, we can get it done today.
I'll sign it then.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was a lot easier than the first one.
Easy peasy lemon squeezy.
Do you want me to sign this particular one?
Sure. Thank you.
And this is the one that deals with the 80 million dollar lawsuit?
Well, my handwriting is so bad, I think you'll probably fill out. No, I've got old man Paulson.
Curse of. Because banks don't require signatures. Well, Mom, you're going to have to do a little homeschooling.
Good night. So we're at the miscellaneous point. No hands up? I hope you have a great vacation. Tell me a little bit about the.
Maybe you can zoom in. Oh, we, we try to provide a county crezone.
That's at a timeshare?
Yeah.
Timeshare on a lake?
It's actually on a golf course, here at Columbia Falls, but that's close to Flathead Lake.
Okay, do you do golf? Flathead Lake probably has a bicycle trail around it. You want to borrow a bike? That's what I keep on saying. Well, let me conclude this session and adjourn. We are adjourned.